I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March 12th, 2013. May we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Snoblen, Mr. Edson.
Here.
Mr. Black.
Here.
Mr. Scribner, Mr. Bergner.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mrs. Golan.
Here, thank you very much. President's report, next month at this time, that very day as a matter of fact, will be the election for new school board candidates, so I just hope everyone in the community makes themselves aware of this, what's going on and who the candidates are, and that by May they will be seated up here as three of us retire. So good luck to all of our candidates, and again, I hope our community gets involved and gets informed. And that concludes the president's report. Next is the superintendent's report, Mr. Simick.
Thank you, Mrs. Golan. I'd like to defer to begin with to Mr. Hoffman.
A few things since our last meeting. First of all, we did accomplish a wonderful Tri-District Day, workshop day with all the teachers from District 67, all the teachers from District 65, and all the teachers from 115 together. We listened to our two keynote speakers, which were Mike Simick from Lake Forest High School and 67, and Dr. Jean Sophie from District 65. It was nice to hear what they had to say and their views on things, and all of our, all the teachers on all three districts appreciated it. After we broke into groups, discussed some of the issues at hand, came back together as a group, kind of had a great lunch together, and then did some departmental work, and so it was, it was a wonderful day. And we thank our two keynote speakers, they did a great job, and our districts are really in good hands. Also since last board meeting, we've had, had quite a bit happening in the building. Our winter sports have ended and our spring sports have started. We have about 800 kids currently in spring sports, so that's a pretty good percentage of our school. And they're all kind of on their way. Cuts have been made and some, and some teams that don't cut are, you know, have as well as, as much as 80 to 90 kids on them. So we're really happy with the participation and the opportunities that we have for our kids. But we would like to kind of recap a little bit of some of the winter season, at least some of the highlights. And one would be our swim team, our boys swim team, which were conference champions, sectional champions, and also finished third in the state as a team, which is a wonderful accomplishment. And Peter Grumhouse, who is one of our senior swimmers, finished second in two of the events and was kind of the highlight, set some pool records along the way. And Coach Cindy Dell was awarded the Illinois Coach of the Year from the Illinois Swimmers Association, so Cindy Dell is one of our longtime coaches, really thankful to her. Our gymnastics team also had a really great season, and they also were conference champs and won our regional, and finished in, well enough in the section of the qualified estate, where Kylie Carlson, our beloved senior, finished third in the floor exercise, and this is Carly's third or fourth in a row time of finishing in the medals in, at the floor exercise at the state tournament. So she's a four-time medal winner, which is really an amazing thing. And our gymnastics coach, Robin Strauss, won Coach of the Year from the Illinois Gymnastics Coaches Association, so we're really proud of them. We also had, in our building, a wonderful event that we have usually twice a year, but one time when we really do it up well, and that's called the ELS game, and it's for our kids who have, have some severe handicaps and some very special needs. And those kids, through the course of our regular school day, when they go to gym class, they're paired with what we call an able-bodied, and we have an adaptive PE class that has all these kids in it with 20 of our kids who are, are their helpers, and they get to know each other relationship-wise, and they kind of practice a little bit on how to play basketball and some other things. And then we play games against other special ed district schools, and this time it was Nutria. So we had our ELS basketball game, and we had a completely full gym, the band, the cheerleaders, prom routines, unbelievable amount of support for these kids, and I'm happy to say we, we actually did win the game, but the winners are truly everyone that comes to those games. And to see a full, fully packed gym for, for that kind of special event is really truly amazing thing at our school, and everyone should see it at least once in their life. We also had a wonderful opportunity for our juniors, and we had a senior citizens party at Dickinson Hall, and we had 60 juniors and 60 seniors, and most of the time that's 120 kids, but in this case it was 60 juniors' kids and 60 senior citizens. And so that was a wonderful opportunity to kind of have our junior kids mix with, with maturing adults in our community, give them both a great opportunity. One of the things that our kids came back with was next year they want to invite their grandparents along to the senior citizen party, and so that's a wonderful thing that we'll implement as, as we get back. I also like to say that our choir has some great performances coming up, but our band and orchestra at this time of the year, combined together, while they're separate most of the year, they combine together to take a trip to Europe, and in this, in this case they're going to Budapest, Vienna, and Prague, and over spring break, and the combined orchestra and, and band will perform in many of these venues that are historic, and our kids will learn a lot and get a great opportunity as we move through. So that's a few of the things that are happening, to say it was a busy time would sort of be an understatement, and like I started, the, the highlight of it all was the Tri-District Day, when all three of us were together in one building and thinking about what's best for kids.
And thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I'd like to ask Jen Knight to come up and address the next topic in the superintendent's report, and that is the ASCD Conference. That's the premier conference in this industry. There is one conference, more than any other, where the, the best thinkers and the best thinking goes on, and one of the things that I've been most interested in coming here is, is promoting higher attendance at these and other conferences, and challenging our staff to look at ways to improve themselves. We've got a large number attending at the conference that happens to be in our backyard this year, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, good night. We have eight of our teachers and two of our department chairs going down as a team of 10, over the course of actually, it ends up being the next six days, calendar days, not even weekdays, going down to the McCormack Place. I personally have never been, so I'm already intimidated, but once you get there, there is a true wealth of professional development. We have some people, a few of our faculty going to some pre-conferences, and then we have a larger team going alongside a 67 team for the actual conference, which is Saturday, Sunday, Monday. We have started looking through the over 400 independent workshops, it's not even 100 that get repeated, it's 400 different workshops, including Sandra DeO'Connor, you know, so there's some big headliners in the mix, and it is everything you can imagine education-wise. We have actually set up a Google Docs in order to look at what other teachers and what other administrators are going to see, because there are so many things even in a given time period that you couldn't hit everything you wanted to. So we're excited, we're hoping that this spurs some thinking at the department level, at the classroom level, at the systems level, about ways that we could grow. And the first kind of round of success will be the learning that happens within the conference experience, but are very hopeful and anticipate that the second round of conversation that comes within the group, hopefully strengthening that team of educators going down together across departments, and then sharing back within their departments, will really be a timely and fun experience and learning.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's, this is without any question the, the biggest conference of the year, it's a real benefit to have it in our backyard this year. I'm thrilled to see 10 of our teachers, and then also a large number from 67 going down as well, so thank you for that. A couple other quick items here, the Tri-District Day. It's the first time that the Lake Bluff Superintendent has ever spoken in our high school, I learned, and spoke to the collective 65, 67, and 115 staff. And Lake Bluff is very, very fortunate to have Dr. Jean Sophie as their superintendent. She's smart, she's really hardworking, she cares very deeply, and she was very fun and engaging to work with on our, our joint presentation, and we have the same philosophy, and that is to try to find ways to get everybody involved in things, so up and moving and working on a topic of shared interests. Not easy to find a topic that the kindergarten teacher and the physics teacher both find meaningful at the same time, so we worked hard on that. Also wanted to talk about the number of things that we're going to be working on in terms of the direction of the district, in terms of shared service. One of the clear directions from the board is to try to look at ways to increase our number of shared service opportunities to the extent possible, and we have a number of those, will be coming out with communication to our public soon about that. Wanted to also mention the spectacle that was this past week, known as the talent show. I think a couple of our young visitors here in the audience tonight, I know we're in attendance, is astonishing to see all the things that kids that are otherwise not highlighted are so amazingly good at, and that's one of the reasons to go, and I encourage everybody to go, is a pretty amazing event. I also wanted to let the board know and the community know about the number of things that I've been attending. Mrs. Whipple has had me on a busy schedule here of late at the Lake Forest City Council, Lake Bluff Village Board, spoke to the Realtors this week, spoke to the liaison groups that we have. Also have an upcoming meeting in retirement homes, I'm not sure how many of those there are, but a number of those. Also like to thank Mrs. Whipple, if it has not hit your home yet, it will sometime, presumably this week, we're subject to the post office's desires of when they want to distribute our bulk mail, but we have the first community newsletter hitting homes. I know some hit yesterday and some today, and it'll be coming up, the board members have that at their table. Also have one thing that is a very pleasant surprise, I don't think anybody knows about this at this point, but we have one of our administrators that has been featured and honored as a, with a distinguished service award, and this is the, the biggest award that the Illinois Association of School Business Officials hands out, is awarded to one or two people annually in the entire state, and Mr. Alan Alvis is the recipient that was selected unanimously, was nominated by a member of the Board of Directors, and was selected unanimously by the entire group, and we're very pleased and proud to be associated with him, and thrilled to be able to extend the congratulations on the award. And I could add, one of the, a couple of the really proud talking points that we have that both Mr. Alvis and our school board and Mrs. Hermes are responsible for is that we're one of only 67 school districts in the entire nation that have a AAA bond rating, and we're one of a very tiny number of schools in the entire state, 1% or 2% of schools in the state that have an item-free audit, no findings whatsoever, and clearly a sign of a well-managed organization, so congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Simick, and again, congratulations, Mr. Alvis. You do us proud. Moving on, we have public participation. If there anyone in the audience who would like to speak, please recognize, raise your hand, and if you would limit your comments to three minutes. Yes, sir?
My name is Carl Lambrecht. As you know, I'm from Highland Park. I noticed some similarities between our activities. For example, you're going to Budapest, Vienna, and Prague, and Highland Park went Prague, Budapest, Vienna. It's more convenient that way. And these kinds of activities somewhat similar. And basically, one of the concerns that we all have is controlling costs. And basically, we have many, many tiny school districts throughout Lake County. We have around 46. We have one regional superintendent of schools, and basically, I don't think a school district should require the amount of bureaucracy that it has. You know, the key thing in a school is the teacher, and without the teacher, we're in trouble. And one of the costs that they had in the Herald Tribune was the GE test is going up for the poor people that should be able to take it. Reducing administrative costs could make it quite possible. I think we're spending billions on administrative costs in education in this state. And basically, there's a small group of us in the collar counties that are now becoming concerned with the cost of schools, especially when you realize that inflationary cost for schools is around 70% compared to other things in the private sector, which is not so much. Medicine and Medicare, medical benefits is going up, but it's only around 40%. So education is a key item that needs to be addressed to controlling costs, and I think that's the key point that the board has. It has fiscal responsibilities, and it has to address them much more strongly than they have in the past. This is true for my community, your community, and the whole of Lake County. When the superintendent of schools for 46 districts has a salary of $120,000, the governor has a salary of $177,000, something's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Moving on, our, our reports and discussion tonight, the first are the key educational goals for 2013 and 2014. Hello, Jennifer.
I wanted to take a few minutes today to review our proposal for educational goals moving forward into 2013-14 school year. Believe it or not, we are ready to start thinking about fall. As you, as we start here, just a quick recap, these probably look very familiar, our 2012-2013 goals, this includes not only the educational goals, but the finance and operation goals as well. This is pretty much where the road for finance and operations for tonight is going to end, because we are going to be, or I am going to be focused on the educational goals. So we started our path down our, looking at goals this year with not just starting to look at the D115 goals, but a consideration of how the structures, not the actual goals themselves, but the structures of District 115 and 67 aligned or did not align. And here is a little bit of a case study for the two structures. Again, it's not an actual linkage of the goals, but of the structures themselves. First off, we donate, we did not even use the same terms, whereas in District 115, we might call something objective, in District 67, they termed it a performance goal. At the same level on the chart, but different terminology. You might understand where this is the beginning of maybe some confusion in articulation. Then you, if, once you go into the actual content of the goals, you'll notice there's still pretty strong distinctions. A primary distinction, which is exemplified in this difference, is that District 67 had performance goals that were, had specific measurement attached to them, and District 115 actually did not have measurement throughout our tiers. So whereas 67 had measurement pretty high up on the spectrum of goals, 115 was staying very thematic. So over the course of really November through January, Andrea Hendrickson and I sat down in, Mike and Jay, Julie, all were involved in the conversation over time, to really do a comparison to the two goal structures. Not a competition, not which structure was better, but what made sense from each structure, and perhaps what could each district within the structure look at each other. So what did we walk away with? First off, we thought it seemed like we could use different terms when we, or the same term for the same thing. We were using different terms, we meant the same thing. It was really a common language issue, not an issue in terms of content, so we thought, why not align them? And you'll see that it reflect as we move further through the presentation. And not surprisingly, both district structures had strengths and weaknesses. So through the process of comparison, each district changed its structure, but did not in any way compromise the unique nature of each district's goals. We knew going in that a K8 district and a 912 district are not going to have the exact same goals, and that was not our intent. So how does that move into District 115? As we look into 2013-14, reconsider where we are, what were some of our goals? The first one was actually removed from the, the process in comparison with District 67. It's something that we have been working for, to increase the continuity from the vision statement, that top layer of the goal, all the way down to the teacher goal, so that there is an accountability up and down the system, and although the goals look different as we move through the different layers of abstraction, they are all going in the same direction. As I mentioned before, to align the nomenclature with 67, this helps with articulation, it helps just bringing to the table, understanding what we're talking about. Another goal, which is, has been in process, but which we are going to try and be more deliberate about, is to use SMART goals and data indicators, both quantitative and qualitative. We want to emphasize that we are not relying on strict test measurements, that there is value in the case studies and in the examples that are going on. We also were very specific in that we wanted to be using those at the department level, that it was not necessarily appropriate to have those SMART goals and data indicators at the top layer, and we'll get to that as we go through the levels, but that at this level, we really wanted to start making a push, and that is going to be a work in progress for us. And that we wanted to move toward more student-centered outcomes. It was something that we noticed as we looked more closely at the goals, that a lot of our goals were about the actions of adults, with the implicit understanding that actions of adults would translate down to students. While that may well be true, and historically probably has been true on occasion, we thought, why not directly have our statements reflect what we're trying to achieve with the student-centered goals? So again, these are not instantaneous changes, but they are clear directives as we went to them. So this is a slightly revised nomenclature for us from top to bottom. Mission, we adjusted mission, as again, you probably recall last year, and it does, I think, fit better with our continuum. Whereas we used to have the goals, and so this will become slightly trickier, we have moved into the vision statements. These are the four board, the four board vision statements, two educational, one finance, one operations. And then drop down into key goals, we'll get to those momentarily. This is really where we focused our work at the building level, where do we think those goals are moving into 13-14? Department goals, this is when they really start multiplying, because as you go to all the different departments. Activities, and then teacher goals. Actually, let me go back one more slide, break this out. Mission and vision statement, we thought really needed to stay big picture, and hope you think that too, since they're really yours. But the mission statement drives the organization, the vision statement, we thought, gave us long-term direction, and would have maybe slight adjustment, as you'll notice as I move through, the 13-14 is exactly the same as the 12-13. Now, those key goals, we thought of as we approached them, as key areas of focus for the building, for the district-level leadership, that we would adjust, probably have a three-to-seven year timeframe on them, couldn't get them accomplished in a year, but should have some endpoint in mind, for the most part. And that some would evolve from year to year, some would fall off, and that all the way down to teacher goals, that there should be ownership at the ground level, that every person in the organization should have some stake in the goals. So, as I mentioned, what used to be goals, now vision statements, 13-14, and are just a continuation of 12-13. We did not, or we did not propose any adjustments in those. Now, the key goals are in your board packet, are spelled out. I will come to a few examples of difference between 12-13 and 13-14, but these are the big-picture key goals. You'll notice that a few have changed even up here. You'll see that special ed has changed to intervention continuum, I'm going to drill down to that in the example, but these are largely just evolutions from where we have been. So I wanted to go through three examples of goals comparison between 12-13, 13-14. The first is a goal that is really refined. It's an adjustment in language, but language that means something in our curriculum development goal. So if you'll notice, we start off with what we considered to be a stronger verb, and when I say we, this was a conversation between all of the curriculum leaders within the building about where we thought we were and where we think is the next step. So we went with stronger verbs. We switched from communication, that we shouldn't just be talking about interdisciplinary communication, to collaboration, that there should actually be work beyond the talk, and we focused on assessment as meaningful. All by itself, assessment is significantly less challenging than meaningful assessment. But these are some of the directions that we've been working in professional development, and wanted to push those forward, say them out loud, and commit to them. Another piece is that goals evolve. This had been a goal that we had really tiptoed into the waters of data in the past few years, and now, for our own reasons, as well as those encouraged by federal and state government, will be moving faster. We, again, wanted to, in essence, beef up this goal. We want to do further exploration about what's out there within the building. Traditional sources of data, some of those that we know, we've had assessment reports here for a while, but what are the non-traditional data sources, or the data sources that we have, but we are just not mining? And then how do we use that to impact learning, not just to help make decisions, but to directly transfer into students' experience? And then some of our goals evolve, and for absolutely good reasons. In 12-13, we were really looking at the special education study, which had evolved from the NSSCD piece, so looking at what is the effectiveness of these new programs that we have brought in-house. And now going into 13-14, that goal has actually blown up in another way, in that we decided, you know, we started taking a look at what we do in the specific area, maybe we should take a look at whole scale, what are we doing in the whole continuum, from general ed all the way to our highest need special ed in terms of intervention? And RTI program, which is how do you meet the needs of a given student who for some reason is not learning at the pace you'd like them to? So what are the pieces that we have in play, and what's the continuum? Where are the efficiencies, or perhaps the opportunities that we're missing? So looking forward, our goals are challenging, they require learning for every person in the buil- They require learning for every person in the building, not just our students. Education is nuanced work. We know that within the goals. It is not a simple matter of drilling it into everyone's head until we get it right, adults or students. And if you notice, there's no subject in our mission. I think that there is truth to that, that it's going to take everyone in the organization to accomplish these things. So, thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try.
Board members, any questions or comments at this time?
On the previous slide, you had RTI, lower right-hand.
Response to intervention.
Thank you.
It is basically, what are the, what are the ways in which you can intervene in a student's learning without having that student move into a special education, IEP?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jen, you mentioned that the coordination of these goals between 115 and 67 helps the articulation of 67 into the high school. Through the tri-district work, is there an effort to help at least reveal this to 65? I know we can't really direct them, but...
There's, well, there's two layers. Tri-district, which, let me be specific, did not focus specifically on our goals, did, much to our happiness and our leadership, reflect on where are we going as a, as a whole community, educational community. So there was that piece, which is, in essence, bigger than these goals. The, each department has ongoing articulation with both districts, which is a completely separate thing from shared service. It's really a responsible educator component, that you're talking to your teachers, including St. Mary's and, you know, Country Day, that, so there is conversation across. It, neither 65 nor 67 has goals that line up exactly with the high school goals. Each district has goals that fit where they are. And when we aligned with 67, it was really, it was an alignment of structure, not of actual goal content.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this, this is the first time the board has seen this work.
Education committee reviewed it at our last meeting, but the board as a whole, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm curious, what, what's the plan from here? I noticed the goals that, I guess are coming from either the staff or the education committee, I'm not sure which, are on the agenda for reports and discussions, but not as an action item, so what's the plan moving forward?
Well, we are not proposing any sort of change to the vision statement. That would be the board's prerogative. We did bring the goals, which, again, nomenclature, pardon me, what it, what we're now calling vision statement used to be called goals. What we're now calling goals used to be objectives. But we did bring the goals to the education committee for discussion, and are sharing them out at this point. I think the question of whether we put them on an action item is really, is yours, Mr. Simic.
Yes, and I, we're going to be recommending that the, that these be approved at next month's meeting. I'm frankly still becoming more and more increasingly accustomed, or learning the, how things are done here, to be perfectly honest with you, because it's different. One of the reasons that I had Dr. Hendrickson and Mrs. Knight sit down together is because trying to keep straight which organization had a goal, and which one had a key performance objective, and that's just one example, and it was all the way through the document. And I give them a lot of credit for sitting down and looking for ways to meaningfully improve each of the systems. And so, I think it's a very honest and sincere statement to say that each organization improved what they had significantly from what they had before, borrowed one from the other. But this will come to the board, and I'm, from what I understand, this is something that comes before the board in the, in the coming month for approval. So education committee reviewed it, this report tonight, and then next month for approval.
And, and would it be your intent that Finance and Operations Committee goals would be put forth at the next meeting as well? Overall district goals? I mean, generally, there are some things addressed in the overall district goals that aren't addressed in the committee goals, as a front, communication is, would be one of those things?
And, Mr. Alba, send it off. We're going to be prepared at that point. I think they're all set, are they not?
There were some revisions from the committee meeting that we'll send out, but I think we can do that by email, and I think we'll be ready to go, yes.
Okay. So, the answer is, yes, we'll be ready to go.
That's the intent, and these are goals for next school year, so, you know, I see them as a recommendation from this board for the new board that will be seated beginning in May. Maybe, maybe other people see them differently, but that's the way I would, would see them. And again, I would just point out, there's been no discussion of these at the board level prior to tonight, so I have some comments, but I'll reserve those until the appropriate time, when it's put for approval, or whenever, so.
They have been discussed in committee, though, so that, you know, for people who aren't aware of how we manage, a lot of this stuff does get hashed out over and over and over again by committee members, which include board members, administration, and community members. So by the time it hits the board table, it's been discussed at great length, and that we're all on the same page. But I, I have to say, what I like about this is that you can see the work of, you know, starting with the teachers and your departments, and everything bubbling up, and so focused on the needs of the students, rather than some top-down ideas we might have. We're really here to validate the work of our educators, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just for clarity's sake, I would point out that the board did not adopt formal goals last year. There were no goals for 12-13. There were goals for 11-12 and, and previously, so I assume you just took the 11-12 goals and, and put them forth.
Well, let me, are we talking goals or vision statements?
I'm talking goals, what we have traditionally called goals and objectives.
Yeah, it is tricky, isn't it? The, from my understanding, what we had traditionally called goals did move forward with one language change, and then the objectives, again, had had slight variation, but those were our focus for this year. Now, vision statements and goals.
Thanks.
Work did not stop.
No, no.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Knight. Next, we have an update on book buy. And who's covering that?
Yeah, I'll hand that off to Mrs. Hermes. And one of the things to, to give a little bit of background on this, one of the things is incoming superintendent that I've heard from many, many parents, and the occasional student as well, is the, the time and the cost associated with book buy. And Mr. Hoffman has been a very eager and willing participant in those conversations, talking about what we do and why we do it, and the struggles that they've had, and trying to find ways to improve that. And then, we discussed it at great length in our cabinet meetings, and broke it into two different parts. One being the bookstore, and the other being book buy. The bookstore being an ongoing undertaking, and book buy being an event, and, and quite an event at that. And one of the, the struggles that, that we've had with that is whether or not somebody could do this in a more efficient, it might take three hours to get through the line, for example, and could it be done faster and more inexplic, and more cheaply than we're currently doing it? And the evolution of this has been nothing short of amazing, meeting to meeting. And wanted to make sure that we provided an update. This is not a final version of it, but Mrs. Hermes has put a ton, and her staff put a ton of work into this, and we needed to bring this to, to the board for an update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Simic. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board on this topic. This is, anybody that has been to book buy, or book buy would agree, this is an important topic. I did have the wonderful opportunity to work with some very knowledgeable staff at the, directly at the building, so I would like to acknowledge Kerry Littell, who's the librarian. Also worked with Laura Clegg in the dean's office, Ramana Assi, who is the bookstore manager, and then Brittany Schramm in our department, really was able to really crunch some of these numbers for us as well. So, when I looked at this opportunity, I was trying to figure out, how could I best synthesize all of the information that we've collected? Because although it sounds like it should be a really simple thing, it's an event, or book buy is, is another event, there's a ton of information. So, I decided to keep it simple, and focus directly on what were we trying to solve? Big picture, what are we here to solve? What's our issue? What do we want to do going forward? So I want to kind of just walk through what the objective of our little team was. And number one was to take a look at reducing time and frustration of standing in line. And as Mr. Simic alluded to, we did take a look at, could a third party come in? I mean, this isn't what we do on an everyday basis. Ms. Knight, you know, laid out very effectively what we do every day. We don't do book buy every day. We don't buy them back every day. We do that event once a year in the spring, and once in the fall. So could someone come in and do this better, more efficiently, more cost-effective than we could? So, starting with the, the first objective, could someone come in reducing time and frustration of standing in line? Absolutely. They're, they're masters at this. Logistically, this makes a lot of sense. Operationally, a, a ton of sense, looking at the third party. But we also took a look at, if that is not the direction that we're going to go in, could we also make changes? Book buy runs well, but could we actually run it a little differently? Could we make some changes? Could we make structural changes? Should we be doing things differently? The committee has continued to research those type of, of options, and I think there's a lot of progress that we could make, even if we kept this internal. Another thing is creating greater efficiency in time and money. And I want to focus directly on the cost to parents when I speak to this objective. We do our book-selling process at cost. I mean, we really do. We're not making, we don't upcharge on retail. We don't buy them back and, and sell them back at a, at a higher cost. Anyone that we've looked at, it's in a third-party arena, of course, they're not a not-for-profit. They're not, they're not doing this because they really feel that high school students need books. They're doing this because this is their business model, and, and we respect that. However, having said that, we're not going to pass on increasing costs to our parents in order to achieve our first objective of reducing the time and frustration. So there seems to be a correlation between the two. We're still working with a third party, ask them to sharpen their pencils, revisit how they, they do things. There should be some economy of scale. They have better access, quite honestly, to inventory, especially for the used book market. We have access to the used book we're buying back from our students. They have access to used books that are being sold back everywhere. So, still working on, on that piece. Leveling out the cost curve for parents, and this is an interesting thing. When, some of our analysis is, we did some book buy comparisons. We, we went and gathered students. We took 10 students at random and said, all right, 10 students, what did their book bag look like? What did they buy this year? Did they buy new books? Did they buy used books? Did they perhaps secure them from another source? Did they go online? In that range of 10 random kids, the dollar amount spent at book buy was $81 to $622. And that's just a span of 10 random kids. So, I don't really know. I didn't look at the entire group, but that certainly is a big thing. When we look at leveling out cost curve for parents, kind of is, it implies in the name, leveling out would mean, in order for everyone to pay a similar amount, or the same amount, some people are going to pay more, and some people are going to pay less. So to some extent, that becomes a philosophical discussion. Should everyone pay the same? Should it be leveled out by grade level? Should we look at the cost that someone might pay on a nine-through-12 basis? So these are some of the things that our committee is still working through. I'd be happy to answer a lot of questions. I don't want to, wasn't going to bring you through all of the details, but just to kind of give you a taste of, of some of the things that we've pulled, some of the data we've looked at, I'm going to kind of just run through a, a quick list of all the information that's involved. Pricing structures, new, used, very used. What, everything we do is formula-based. Where do we buy those back? Where do we sell them? What are the reviews? How do we go back? How do we evaluate a book? What's not eligible to be bought back? Can you buy, buy back a workbook? Do you buy back a novel? Do you not buy back a novel? When do the additions change? How much inventory should we keep? We might know that there's 24 kids taking this class, but we might have four of those students that go online, two that got it from a sibling, one that got it from a friend. We actually don't know, how many books should we buy? Do we buy 24? Or do we end up short? So inventory plays into it. We look at the demand. We look at the classes that all students need to take. Can we leverage some of our buying practices to get better pricing on high-demand books? We look at the useful life. How long does a book typically last? How long does it take it to go from new to used, to what we like to call very gently used, or really very gently used, but very used nonetheless? Taking, taking a look at the logistics. We've had great discussions on the line, the stations, the tech training. We also do ID pitchers. We have clubs there, activities there. What is the purpose of each stop as you move through that sometimes three-hour line that people experience? What is the purpose of each station? What are our checks and balances as we go through on this? There's, there's also, you know, a lot of internal controls that are done at the same time. Some of the other data that we looked at quickly, we looked at the percentage of students that are prepaying the registration prior to coming book buy. It's about 50%. I thought it would, might have been a little higher. So we've got to take a, take a look at how we're leveraging our technology in our online communications. How many people like to stop and actually look through their actual used book? They want to, you know, kind of peruse it. Am I, am I getting a good one? When are our schedules ready? How long do we let students make changes to their schedule? When do we have to cut that off? What if a schedule changes? What do we do with the children or students that have schedule changes after, you know, after they've gotten their books? How do we do this with students whose fees are waived due to economic need? What are the curriculum review cycles? What's the impact of the ongoing technology in used books? Could be huge. What is, how do we plan on delivering supplemental materials? Novels, clay, photography packets? We also take a look, do we have classroom sets? Should we have classroom sets? Should we have library sets that are available for students to use? So this is just kind of a, a quick list that I put together, but we've been having a lot of discussion and doing a, a lot of data gathering on these things. And I would love to say that we've solved this. You know, thank you for this task. We've solved it. Next, let's move on, but we're not there yet. Where we are is that we're going to continue analyzing third-party options to see whether or not there's a balance between time, efficiency, and cost. At the same time, we're not letting go of some of the things that we've determined or analyzed from our own data, could, of changes we could make. We're going to continue those internal adjustments, not only for book buy, which is, you know, typically right before school starts, but also things that we can do to impact the book buyback, which is this spring. So I appreciate the time to give you an update. I have tons of information, so feel free to ask your questions, otherwise, I'll be gone.
Board members, do you have questions? Again, we had a pretty thorough presentation at our committee meeting, but...
One, first an observation, then a question. This is the most cut-and-dried thing that we do, in many ways, in, in the educational system, because this is about books, and it's about logistics. And compare it to teaching kids who come in with every kind of permutation imaginable, this is relatively straightforward, and it's dizzying in its complexity, trying to get it right. I've get, can you tell us what the bottom line was, review what the bottom line was? Because you looked at the data. If we went with this vendor, what it would cost our average kid compared to doing it ourselves?
Well, we don't have final pricing, so I will still give them that, that, that gray area, but on an initial pricing base, and this was not a full sample, so, you know, Joe can sit up, stand up here someday and tell you about sampling and sample size, but based on the preliminary information that we looked at, it would cost parents probably 60% more for that book bag than it would have if they're buying it directly from us.
So to be clear, operating it ourselves is 60% less costly at this point, to the best of our knowledge?
At this point in the process, yes.
Than it would be if we went with a vendor? Is that what you expected?
No. I, I, I mean, I, like I said, I respect that they have a, a for-profit, I mean, business model, and I thought that they have, like I said, the greater access, so I thought they would be getting their books probably at a better rate than us, you know, economy of scale type of thing. One of the things that I was surprised to learn is when they looked at some of our book pricing, is actually said is, you know what, you have a couple of publishers on there that you get some pretty good rates, they're better than some of our rates. So I think Ramana's doing a pretty good job at securing us some of the best rates that we can. For those of you who may not be aware, we sell our new books at retail cost, our cost plus $1, and our dollar is basically to cover the shipping for them. So, yeah, I was, I was not expecting there to be that much of a difference going forward.
One last comment?
Yeah, it's for the board's information. This is the, an update to the board, but after we get the final information, Mrs. Hermes is going to do a roadshow and speak with our parents on this, because this is an item of, as you... and speak with our parents on this because this is an item, as you might imagine, of considerable interest to parents. And the fact that the more research we do, the more we find answers that we don't expect. It's interesting and also, parents need to know the level of work that's gone into trying to save them money and the difficulty in making this thing less expensive for them.
Alright. Thank you very much. Very informative. Okay, moving on, we have our board committee reports. The first is the board education committee. Nikki is not here this evening. Monty or Todd, do you have a report?
The education committee last met February 6th, which was before our previous board meeting. We have not met since.
Alright. Thank you very much. Next, we have the board finance and operations committee. Mr. Carey, Mr. Block?
The finance committee met on March 7th at 7:30. It is a joint meeting of both finance and operations. For the members of the audience, this is a public meeting. It's also one where we have, depending on the meeting, three or four community members that are part of those joint committees who actively participate in our conversations. The two principal items on the agenda, both related to one of financing. We had Elizabeth Hennessy, our representative from William Blair, come in and talk to us about opportunities to finance the capital projects that the board has been contemplating for quite some time. Given the current economic environment, low interest rate environment, we have an opportunity to finance some of the long-lived projects that Mr. Alvis has spoken about before at a very attractive rate. Many of these projects are not nice-to-haves, but real needs, like the Dektron unit for the air handling in the pool, furnace repairs, et cetera. Also in there, though, is the replacement of the track over on the east campus that we've been talking about for quite some time. No decision yet has been made on those projects, but we wanted to at least be satisfied that we were up to date as to the ability to finance those in the marketplace at very attractive rates. One question that came up was what if we start to do some of those projects before the end of the fiscal year, but don't do the financing until after June 30th? One easy aspect of that is to just have the board approve a reimbursement resolution so that we can do the financing after some of the work is done, just to sort everything out. That reimbursement resolution will likely come before the board for approval at our April board meeting, just so we've got that. Oh, it was last month? Coming to that next. That's a disadvantage of missing the February meeting, I guess. Could you say that one more time, Alan? I didn't hear your last comment.
The board has already passed a reimbursement resolution, which says if you incur any costs, you can reimburse yourself out of that. It doesn't obligate you to do any project or do any financing. The next step would be to pass a parameters resolution.
I'll get to that.
Which is leading into what Jim's talking about.
Yeah, it is indeed what Jim's referring to, I believe. That was the recommendation of Mrs. Hennessy, not to get into a lot of detail for the public, but that's what we're talking about.
He's going to finish.
The second item on the agenda was the opportunity to refinance the remaining portion of the $54 million we issued back in 2006 for the major reconstruction project. Also to refinance, refund is yet another term, the general obligation bonds that were issued a few years ago. We can do that at an attractive savings to the district and we can save an awful lot of money as we get closer to the callable date on those items. Part of this is to say that this board over the last few years has periodically been checking to see whether there's an opportunity to improve the situation for the taxpayers relative to the cost of financing those big projects. So, we typically will meet with Liz Hennessy every six months or so, as well as having an ongoing dialogue with her as to is the market in a situation where now is the time to move? Based on her report last week, we're not there yet, but at some point in time over the foreseeable future, we will be. It would therefore make sense for the board, and this wouldn't be precedent-setting at all. We had one a few years ago, to actually approve a parameters resolution that would basically put us in the position to undertake such a financing in between board meetings and take advantage of an opportunity in the market without being tied to having to hit the next board meeting and go through it. We did such a thing a few years ago and then the market moved away from us and we lost the advantage. So, we never acted on it, but we had it on the table. Those parameter resolutions, I think, have a six-month life to them, but it would be the type of thing that would be prudent for the board to have in place because that likely, or that current situation might well present itself over the next six months and you just want to be ready for it. So, no action today, but I think probably at the April meeting, we ought to do that parameters resolution just because we are familiar with it. And that'll be in place then for the new board as things go forward. That's it on those items. Dick, was there anything else?
No, I just, for the sake of clarification again, these parameter resolutions don't bind the board to do anything or not do anything. It just puts in place a preapproval to go forward should the board decide to go forward. Correct? Just want to confirm that. No, no substantive other comments. I would mention that after you had to leave, I think, Jim, we did talk about student fees and the philosophy behind student fees, our long-term desire to reduce the mandatory fees to the extent we can in association with our overall financial goals. But no decisions were taken. It was just our preliminary annual discussion on the topic of student fees. And I think that was the only thing of substance that was discussed after you left.
Thank you. And I don't think we set a date for our next meeting. I assume it will be involving new people at perhaps the same time.
Alright. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Dick. There are no liaison reports tonight. So, moving on, we have our only action item, and that is the approval of the human resources report. Ms. Knight?
Hello again. I think you probably feel like you've seen me here before today. But I do want to come back to our last item, or at least my last item, which is the human resources report. We are truly in the midst of our interview process and as data to support that claim. On Wednesday past, we had our final round of counseling candidates come through. Three candidates, and I will talk a little bit more about the components of the overall process, but that was our final round with them. On Thursday, we had our second round of math candidates come in. We had eight math candidates come into the building for half-hour interviews each. On Friday, we had our fourth round for counseling. And today, we had our third round of math. We actually have some math candidates coming back on Friday. So, we are really making a building-wide focus and a department, real strong department efforts out of counseling and math to find the strongest candidates while we are really on the front edge of hiring season, per se. We are ahead of the curve and thus have the luxury of really being able to get some of the best candidates, what we believe are the best candidates out there before we become in competition with other districts. So, I did want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about what the process looks like for us. It's very similar regardless of whether we have a department head hire, which you actually saw tonight, and/or a teacher hire, which is where we are right now. We start with calling through our resumes. We look at every application that comes in for the positions of which I speak tonight. We're talking about 400 resumes, 400 applications per position. So, we do take a look at every one of those and try and call through to about 30. At that point, we have department members. We essentially have a committee that goes down to those 30, 35 and says, who are we going to bring to the table for our first round of interviews? And depending on the position, we'll have about eight per position. That's a ballpark. We really, if there's 10 strong candidates, we'll bring in 10. And that first round conversation is really a judge of who looked good on paper, but now that we're at the table with them, maybe they looked a lot better on paper. So, it is not about ranking candidates. It's about seeing, okay, this person maybe was not the best call on it. That is generally me. Two of our teachers and a department chair for this specific position. We're focused on, is this person, when they're talking, are they talking about learning? Not about teaching, which is what adults do, but about learning, which is what students do. Do they have high expectations for themselves, for their students? What's their work ethic? And at the core, are they passionate about kids? Are they passionate about doing right by students? So, we're looking for some of those big layers. Our second round of interviews is a longer interview and it starts to go into detail. We give scenarios. What would you do if? Start going into pedagogy, specific instruction based on content, some content knowledge. Those math department really like to, they ask some math questions. I try not to sit in their hot seat, ever. But they start pushing. What is the depth within this candidate in terms of both instruction and in terms of content? That is typically, again, our department chair, two or three teachers, and Jim Sullivan, who's our director of evaluations and loves to interview. He's an exceptional interviewer. The third round, we, in full disclosure, tell our candidates is the marathon session. Tell them just to blackout the day. They come in, they will typically be in the school for about a four-hour stretch. In that four-hour stretch, they are busy. We have a, that's our admin interview, so another longer interview. Jay and appropriate admin, kind of in that support role. New eyes on the candidate. A conversation with the department. A student tour of the building, which is interesting not only because you, what are the candidates' takeaways from our buildings? What did they notice? But also, what did the students notice? And if the candidate is going into a teaching position and a department leadership position, we will have them teach a class with two observers on, two adult eyes on the lesson. Seeing for what's actually the rapport between students? What is this person doing with content? And how is this person, who even though they do not know our students, how are they reading the students within the class? That is our third round. And at that point, we have some ideas, but we generally have at that point really good questions about who is the right fit. And we have a lot of data. So, we take the data, we pull it together, and we say, okay, where do we need to dig deeper on each candidate? And we start calling references. We have made a concerted effort this year to be very clear there are no decisions before this point. We want to get a sense of people who have lived with the candidates and some of the things that we have reservations about just through the entire process. Just questions hanging out there, let's ask specifically about that. We spend several days doing that. Give it time to flesh out. If at any point in the process, we feel like we've stalled, we thought we had a good slate, but after this round in the process, we're not so sure, go back to the drawing board. Our teachers, our administrators have felt and have felt validated by the fact that we've held really high standards. We had three counseling candidates come in the other day and we left the interview saying, we have three hires sitting here. It's not that we, we had three hires, we have to choose one. I don't think our board would appreciate just pushing them all through, see what happens. We have to choose one, but we have three viable candidates here. It's a wonderful problem to have. It's exciting because then it causes conversations about what's most important for our students. We don't just have to look for a hire, but we have to look for what's the right fit for where we are right now. We did, through this process, have an English department hire that we have proposed to the board. We are excited to bring Kristen Carlson onboard. She comes with 20 years of educational experience. She is thrilled to become a part of our team from Grayslake. They have a very strong, and she has been a very significant part of a focus on data, of a focus on response to intervention, of a focus on collaboration using data to ask questions. Not as a stick, but as a point of inquiry, as a starting point. So, she is thrilled to be joining our team. Our English department is thrilled to have her. And we, as a team, think she's going to bring an addition. She's not just going to keep the boat, but she is going to help push it further. So, thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's fun. And hopefully, we will be able to bring a couple more to you in April.
Thank you. Any questions, board members?
Jen, in the fall, there had been some concern that the strike would have an adverse impact on recruiting. Are you seeing any such impact?
It is difficult to say for certain because people that don't apply don't send you an email to say, I would have applied, but. However, we are still getting a very strong candidate pool. There might be individuals out there that chose not to apply, but it is, there's a wealth of talent out there and diversity of experience.
Yes?
Related to that question is, I spoke with somebody that is a recruiter and there is a thing called the Lake Forest Effect. And that is that a sizable number of candidates take themselves out of the running because they are, they believe that they will not be considered or they're intimidated by the prospect of coming here. Some of the candidates, like myself, just didn't know any better and threw that in anyway. But that is something that is unrelated to the strike that apparently occurs. I was surprised at the relatively few number of candidates for the elementary principal position for '67, which is, you know, when we go to look for a high school principal and some of the key positions there, it's very clear it'll be harder to fill those positions. I wanted to applaud Mrs. Knight, Mr. Hoffman, on a really rigorous process that included contact with kids, assessment. Sometimes students are the most insightful. And also, continuing on and through background checks, which are the clearest indication of future performance. So, really well done. Thrilled to see an English department head that truly wants to be here. That is going to be a leader in her field.
It is grueling, but there is no better reminder that we're a team when we all come together and, you know, with a single focus on this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mike, excuse me, Sharon, could you elaborate on that comment a little bit about the Lake Forest effect? I'm not sure I understood what you meant. Do you mean that some people don't apply because they don't feel like their credentials or experience are at a level that would allow them to be competitive here? Or do you mean that the environment in Lake Forest, for whatever reason, is unattractive to them?
Not unattractive, just that they don't believe that they'll be considered, that they self-select out because they don't believe that coming where they come from, they'll be considered. So, if it's not, you know, drop a name, if I don't come from Stevenson or New Terrier, I don't have a shot at getting a job in Lake Forest. When in fact, some of the things that we're looking for very often are people that may not have had the experience in those places, but can develop into industry leaders, having had very meaningful formative experiences in other places. And they don't apply because they don't think that they'll get a nod or they don't think they'll get a serious look from us. And that's not coming from me. That's coming from people that do this for a living.
But you're saying that that's an unfortunate circumstance for both our district and potential candidates, is what I'm hearing.
Absolutely. Without any question. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, for the elementary principal position, for example, we undertook all sorts of very unusual practices to try to create a larger talent pool, in part because of that limiting effect, oddly enough. We don't seem to have a dearth of applicants at the high school level for any of our positions, which is a great thing, including the English department head. But those are things that I hear out on the street that, hey, you are going to have a harder time, especially when we start looking for a principal, that you're going to have to undertake unusual measures to pull people in. And I think that is, that's very unfortunate for us.
And I presume we'll be working on ways to turn that situation around.
Already are.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Alright, Mrs. Knight, thank you so much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the human resources report? May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report?
So moved.
Second.
We have a roll call, please. Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye. Motion carries. And next, we have the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have removed at this time? Seeing none, the consent agenda tonight consists of, A, approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement; B, approval of minutes from a regular meeting from February twelfth, two thousand and thirteen; minutes of an executive session from February twelfth, two thousand and thirteen; minutes of a joint board workshop February twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen; minutes of a joint board workshop March seventh, two thousand and thirteen; the renewal of Illinois High School Association membership, and the disposal of audio recordings from July twelfth, two thousand and eleven. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye. Motion carries. We had three FOIA requests this past month, one from Pat O'Brien, one from Robert Rita, and one from Nancy Thorne. Announcements, Thursday, March fourteenth, is the band and orchestra concert at the Raymond Moore Auditorium at seven-thirty P.M. Tuesday, March nineteenth, is the choral concert in the auditorium at seven-thirty P.M. Friday, March twenty-second, spring break begins at the end of day. Monday, April first, school reopens from spring break. And our next regularly-scheduled Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, April ninth, here at seven P.M. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.